Okay, so with that said, manager, I'll turn it over to you for the legislative briefing.
Thank you, Mayor Council, and we do have to start off today's work session and update on our legislative strategy with our our Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, Bree Franco, and I'm going to kick it over to her to make sure that she is giving you an update on what's happening at the state level. Bree?
Thank you. Thank you, Spencer. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Bree Franco, Intergovernmental Relations Officer for the City of Austin, here to give you an update on the legislative session going on right now. If I T could pull up the power port, thank you. And I will be quick. In fact, I'm going to go through very quickly and just open it up to questions for you all on things. Next slide, please, I T. Thank you. So in total, there have been 7,000 bills filed. That's on track with all other sessions despite the pandemic, despite everything going on. We saw just as many bills filed this session. We are currently tracking about 2,200 of those bills that we're following, monitoring, getting analyzation on. We are halfway through session. It feels like it's been longer than that, but it hasn't. We still have the second half to go, 55 days left. That's when the majority of work on the floor starts to begin. They're still in hearings right now. In fact, there's a number of hearings going on that we are monitoring right now. But they will soon be moving to more floor action. The, as you know, the Lieutenant Governor set out 31 priorities for all 31 of his senators, and Speaker Phelan had seven priority bills in response. The main change between what started in the beginning of session and now is that they added bills related to Winter Storm Uri, or Yuri, I'm not quite sure on the correct pronunciation, but in related to a power grid stability or car reform and so forth. Next slide, please. The bills I have in the presentation today are at the very top of what we're monitoring. So I mean, and this is just skimming the top 15 to 20 bills of those 2,200 we're monitoring. I'm starting with the bills that are actually having hearings right now as we are presenting. So there are, as you know, three disannexation bills moving right now related to the Lake Austin properties, also known as the Manana Properties. Those were the ones that were not being taxed due to that 1986 ordinance, and then council repealed that ordinance. And so now they're seeking to be disannexed from the city to not have to be in the city limits any longer. There's also West Rim, which is a refile from last session, and then Lost Creek is also another community in this, in this area. These are all going to be served by that new fire station out at Three Loop 360. So they're all in that same area. Lost Creek is also being heard in Land and Resource Management. It actually was already heard this morning. West Rim and Lake Austin are going to be heard today as well in the same committee. Next slide, please. We also have up today another committee that is hearing public safety funding bills. So two weeks ago, there were three bills heard, or four bills heard in State Affairs. And today, in Ways and Means, there are four other bills being heard. So different committees, same topic. They generally all define defunding local government as a saying. They just have different penalties for the result as it relates to either the ability to increase property taxes, the ability to increase any revenue, or also swiping sales tax to compensate for DPS being sent in by the governor to manage public safety activities. Those are all in a hearing going on right now with Chief Chacon present to testify. Next slide, please. And as I stated, these were the bills, sorry. So it's four bills in Ways and Means, three a couple of weeks ago in State Affairs, and then there is in the Senate, there is also SB 23 moving by Senator Huffman. That is the main police funding bill that is moving in the Senate compared to the seven to 10 bills moving in the House right now. Next slide, please. And these are the remaining public safety bills. Next slide. There are a number of them that we are following right now. Next slide, I T. Thank you. Also, another big issue relates to the camping ban ordinance. There is a bill that is moving forward that if you see the camping ban at the bottom, that would make it a statewide offense to be camping in public places. That was heard two weeks ago in State Affairs. This week in Urban Affairs, there will be a hearing on one of the Shortner bills that he filed in response to the hotel purchases. I T, if you can move back to that homeless slide. Somehow we went back two slides. Thank you. There, this, one of them will be heard. They've both been heard by Shortner. They've both been voted out of committee. Although those bills are related to the purchase of the hotel in Williamson County, these bills have a much broader effect because they relate to housing anyone that has experienced homelessness. And to be frank, all of our public housing at some point will deal with someone that experiences homelessness. Public housing is about moving people that don't have homes into homes. So these bills have a much broader effect than just those hotel purchases, that hotel purchase in Williamson County. Next slide. There are also, as you know, bills related to Austin Energy that are moving through right now. Right now, the bills that are having hearings are by Senator Buckingham, and there's a hearing being held in the House State Affairs by Representative Kane. And that's not a familiar name to our delegation, just like on those disannexation bills, none of the the people that filed those in the House are part of the Austin delegation. This bill has to do with allowing the PUC to have rate appeals. It would allow people to go to PUC anytime and practically all the time to appeal Austin Energy rates. And so we would probably be under constant review by the PUC if these bills passed. Next slide. And then we have right now what we call the Community Advocacy Bill. The other side calls as the taxpayer-funded lobbying bills. And these bills would limit the ability of local governments to participate in the proceedings down the state legislature, and they are taking a bunch of different forms. SB 10 is going to be heard as well today in Senate Local Government. So there are so many bills that affect local government. The Senate has an entire committee dedicated to it. But this bill would say we can no longer hire lobbyists, and TML could no longer hire lobbyists to participate in that process. It also is unclear on whether Intergovernmental Relations Offices could be retained by cities to participate in processes. Then there's some that are more just about disclosure, about putting things on our websites, about putting things before council to be approved. Capri Glione in the House had a bill related to that that we supported. Benton Court has a bill related to that that we are on because they have language in these bills that talk about that political subdivisions can't spend money to directly or indirectly influence the outcome of legislation. That indirectly influenced language is so broad, it leaves the language so vague that it would be hard for cities and political subdivisions to understand what they are doing or not doing that violates these bills. And so that's what makes that bill difficult. Also, I will note that SB 10 by Senator Hall only applies to counties and cities. So other political subdivisions can spend taxpayer-funded money to lobby the legislature. Whereas on the House side, HB 749 by Middleton did apply to all political subdivisions. So there's a difference between the two bills right now. Next slide, I T. And so we also have just some general Austin preemption stuff going on, too. I know you all have heard a lot about HB 3813 that would preempt our noise ordinance only for the City of Austin. This bill would only preempt the City of Austin's noise ordinance. Every other, all cities across the state have noise ordinances, but this one just targets ours. It would say that bars and live music venues can go up to 75 decibels, which is about the sound of a lawnmower and every day of the week from 10 a.m. to 2 a.m., if they're in residential neighborhoods. The Committee Sub actually removes live music venues because our live music venue community has, you know, stated they didn't want anything to do with this bill. They have worked closely with the city and other stakeholders on these ordinances. And but, so the Committee Sub took them out. It wasn't adopted, but it also goes up to 80 decibels. And 80 decibels is about the noise of a, can be the noise of a jackhammer outside your house between 10 a.m. to 2 a.m., Sunday through Monday. There also is SB 14 by Senator Creighton. You guys are familiar with this bill from last session. It would preempt the city's non-discrimination order. It would preempt our water break ordinance. It would preempt a number of our paid sick leave ordinance and so forth. So it preempt a number of workers and employee benefits and rights. And then there's also just, again, we talked about this before, bills that relate to super preemption that basically would preempt any regulation, for instance, for any license holders. So for instance, pool operators are license holders. That would affect how we operate our public swimming pools. So that bill had a hearing in March. Next slide, please. And then there's been some bills, of course, related to gas and pipeline issues of significance because I know, well, both of these are significant bills. HB 17 by Representative Des Hotel became a priority item, basically says we can't restrict our force in building which energy source is used. The Pipeline Preemption Bill, HB 1683 by Representative Langraff, I know received a lot of attention in the news because of its potential effect on our operation of Barton Springs. But that one has not moved, and we are working with Representative Langraff on language that could address the issue related to Barton Springs, and he understands that issue. Next slide, please. And then we have the pension bill that was filed by the Austin Police Retirement System. As you guys know, this was filed on their own without working with the City of Austin on that bill. In fact, we got a draft of the bill a week before. They went to find someone to file it, and our input wasn't accepted as part of this bill. So it doesn't reflect the work that the city has been trying to do on the pension. That bill is, has been filed by Representative Rodriguez. And then there's a bill that relates to, that was discussed last session as part of the SB 2 Revenue Cap Discussions, and that would be that all debt would have to be voter-approved going forward, and that would take out the ability to use a lot of debt that we use for immediate purchases that we use for purchase of things like vehicles. And so this would actually pretty much negate that 3.5 revenue cap that we can go up to now if it was moved over to our side of the equation. That bill's still pending in Ways and Means, but we are still dealing with some finance legislation out there, too. Next slide. And of course, as you guys can imagine, there's definitely bills related to the pandemic that are going through right now that are going to limit local governments' ability to take action during pandemics in the future. I know you all are aware of the election integrity bills. That was, we have language in our legislative agenda related to these issues that was put forward by former Councilmember Garza and Councilmember Alter. And I know we had some council members down there to testify against HB 6. But as you guys know, those are moving through. They call them election integrity. I think we would call them something else. They definitely limit people's ability and rights to vote. Next slide, please. And I like our title. There is more big bills. So on some bright spots we have moving forward. We do have the Medicaid reimbursement for local health departments, which is a bill we tried to get last session with Houston, and that is moving forward. It's been placed on the Senate Intend Calendar. The bills related to prima facie speed limit are getting some movement. We've already taken some action here locally, but that would still help us with defraying the cost of those actions with those bills, and not to mention being able to expand it to even more roads within Austin, the lower speed limit that is supported by many in our community. Next slide, please. And as you know, we also want to give an update. The Inclusionary Zoning Bill, unfortunately, has not moved, and it's in Land and Resource Management, which is a difficult committee. But we did have a hearing on the cloud computing bill last session. We had a number of political subdivisions come out to support that bill, which would make it easier for political subdivisions to finance cloud computing, and also the tech sector was in support. Rackspace got up to testify for that bill as well. Since using hardware computers is now becoming less and less accessible, more obsolete, this would help modernize the code. And I think that's the last slide. Next slide.
I have a quick question on that slide.
Go ahead.
Bree, do you know on the inclusionary zoning, HB 84, has Representative Hinahosa requested a hearing?
I believe she has, but I will confirm, Councilmember.
Thanks.
I am available for any other questions.
Anybody have any questions? Can you take it down from the screen? Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for Bree, Bill, and then Casar?
Bree, on the de-annexation of bill, is that included all in one, the West Rim, the Lost Creek, and the Lake Austin, or is it separate bills?
They are three separate bills.
Okay. And how do they look? Do they, they look like they're gonna, might have support to pass, or?
The people in these communities definitely have connections to the Capitol. They definitely have strong connections to the Capitol. Lake Austin, for instance, is being carried by former Speaker Craddock. And he, as you know, is a very powerful member of the legislature. So unfortunately, they do have some strength behind him.
Mayor, you know, I really think that what we should do on these is suspend any kind of spending in this area until we find to the end of session is to see if we're, is that going to happen? Why invest our resources into that area if they really have a chance to pull out? So I would feel like that if that's a possibility, then the possibility is there. And I think that we shouldn't be spinning a dime in that area anymore. You know, we're investing a lot of our money with TDOT for the bridges and the road improvement at 360. It's just, you know, if they don't want to be part of Austin anymore, then, then we should take steps to make sure that we're not damaged by any of these actions that might happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to say on the Lake Austin bill, too, it also affects our ability to protect Lake Austin as a drinking source. So when, if they de-annex, it pulls out those environmental regulations to protect not just the beauty and character of that shoreline, but the erosion that could result from building along that shoreline, and then the impact that can have on the water quality that that water source is for Austin and other Texans.
Casar or Casar?
Mayor, I wanted to thank and take a minute to thank Bree and everybody on the team departments and the management staff supporting her and our team along with the lobby team. It's just such grueling work in such an intensely short period of time. So I just really want to thank you here during this session. And it seems like they get worse and worse. You know, I just saw that Representative Talarico filed a bill to to cap the price of insulin, where people are sometimes paying $1,000 a month for their insulin. And that should, you know, we would, any reasonable legislature, I wish, were focused on things like that or on hardening our infrastructure or on hearing the Inclusionary Zoning Bill from Representative Hinahosa. But instead, just to be clear, from what you told us in the presentation, what you're having to be focused on is making sure that some of the highest property, highest value property in the city has to still pay taxes like everyone else. But that's what you have to focus on, or protecting our drinking water from getting polluted or protecting our ability to defend against discrimination based on race, gender, religion, and sexual orientation, protecting our rules for water breaks, helping keep Barton Springs open, and protecting our ability to write and pass our own budget. And that's really critical work that's being done by a small team, and they want to cut the ability for you to even have that team. And so I just want to extend a moment of thanks for that work and to recognize how frustrating it is that instead of advancing the better interests of the state, we're just doing our best to to keep the drinking water clean and to allow cities to write their own budgets and to protect people from discrimination or bad practices at work. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you.
Casar or Ellis?
Thank you, Mayor. Bree, have you followed the permitless carry bill? I don't know if that was part of our adopted, you know, council-focused legislative agenda, but I didn't know if you had updates on that or if your team was watching it.
We are monitoring the gun legislation, Councilmember, but I will have to follow up with, I can follow up with a memo to all of you specifically on those bills. So I'm sorry that I can't, I don't have enough knowledge right now to speak to it. But I know those are going forward. I know there's hearings on those bills happening right now, too.
Okay, thank you. That would be really helpful for us to know more about. And I just want to echo the concerns of, you know, with the de-annexation bills that we have a responsibility to protect our drinking water for our entire community. And also floodplain and shoreline issues. You know, a lot of the work that we do is about Atlas 14 and the floodplains. And so just understanding, we historically have had an ability to make sure that even if it's in our ETJ, that we can do floodplain variances in extenuating circumstances. So, you know, we really do have an important role to play for our community to make sure we're watching those shorelines, you know, working on issues with the Army Corps of Engineers to make sure that any development that's in or near the water, the creeks and the lakes, is something that we have the power to affect. I think that's a really important power that we hopefully can control as a city.
I agree. Thank you.
Senator Tobo?
Yeah, I had a couple of quick questions. One, thank you, Councilmember Ellis, for raising the bills related to permitless carry. I think that is indirect conflict with, with multiple resolutions we passed asking, asking our legislature to pass reasonable gun regulations. This is going in the other direction and really making, making all of our communities less safe. So I hope that the city will, based on those past resolutions, I hope that the City of Austin will, will at least weigh in on those. I understand there's a lot coming before you, and let me too add my thanks to, to all the work that you and your team are doing in a legislative session that has much, much, much to be concerned about. I did want to ask you in particular, one, and I just want to, I want to not lose sight. I think there are a lot of elements that are important with regard to the annexation bills, but I, I just want to underscore to the community that, to me, this is about fair taxation and whether all, all of those who are receiving services in the City of Austin are helping provide the taxes that support those investments. And so it's just a matter of fairness and a matter of equity, and I, I can understand why people who are benefiting from city services believe that they shouldn't share in the cost of, of helping support those through their taxes. It just, it is really an unfair situation.
If I may, Council.
Resolved. Yes.
Yes. Senator Eckhart, during the hearing in the Senate, made an excellent point of how do you choose these residents versus similarly situated residents? What's the difference at some point between those up at that part of the shoreline versus further down? And it is concerning that if these bills pass, you'll continue, I believe, we will continue to see a wave of those that can hire lobbyists or have lobbyists in their communities or have connections to lawmakers seek to de-annex that continue to de-annex at the Capitol. And that continue to be allowed without any kind of principles laid out that determine what is the standard that should be allowed to de-annex? And what should the conversation be with both the city and county of how, and the residents of how that process should occur? I will note during the Lost Creek hearing, there were, I have just a couple, but some residents that got up there to spoke against, that spoke against the bill that felt like they weren't, that the bill did not provide the process for them to know what's going to happen next. How would services be transferred? How would they, who would take over? What, what did that mean? And so I think that, that those are fair questions to ask, and they haven't been fully discussed with us, with the city or other providers or even the county per se, so.
Yeah, those are, those are really interesting points. And I'm glad that we have members of those communities who are, are raising them, and, and thanks to our senator for raising another point, which is that this is not just an impact on Austin, but I hope other cities and towns across the country, I mean, across the state are, are paying attention because it certainly could be, this could be coming to them next, next session. They may have areas that want to be de-annexed because they don't, they don't want to pay taxes any longer either. I wanted to talk just briefly about the pension bill. So I, I am super familiar with the situation because I serve on the council working group in my, in a different hat. I serve on, on the Pension Review Board, and so I'm, I was, you know, I'm, I am really hopeful that the Pension Review that our Austin Police Retirement Board will work closely with the City of Austin, and it seemed like that was happening in a way that it ought to have. Can you help me understand, did you have conversations, were you able to have conversations with Representative Rodriguez before this bill was filed?
No.
Have you had a conversation since? Is he aware of the work that the city had been doing with the staff at Police Retirement?
I believe Representative Rodriguez was, is aware of some of this, of what is going on, but we have not had a conversation with him yet. And I would like to definitely have that conversation with him and have those members of you on council that, especially in the Audit and Finance Committee that have overseen this, and particularly you, Councilmember Tobo, as a city member on the Austin Police Retirement System, that can even speak to those actions that were taken during those meetings as well with him so that he knows the full story. As you know, the city does believe the pension needs to be fixed. There are issues we need to resolve. We do, it does need more funding, but also needs some of the protections that have been put in place in prior pensions that have gone through the state so we don't end up back here again or even too soon. You know, we need to, to find out how, you know, fix how we got here, and then also how we can shore it up to be a stable pension for those police men and women going forward. So we want to work with that. I know that Ed Van Neo just had another correspondence to Patty Featherstone expressing our strong interest of wanting to get back to the table to continue to discuss this. But we also need to have those conversations with Representative Rodriguez.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. And I would echo that. I mean, clearly, our pension needs, needs reform. And I know that the city is committed to that, so I hope that we can figure out a path to do so in a way that works, works and creates a sustainable path.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alter?
Thank you. I want to, you know, piggyback a little bit on Councilmember Tobo's comments with respect to the pensions and underscore what Ms. Franco just said, that it is, you know, this is a situation that we have been working on for a few years in good faith and with the hopes of coming to a resolution that actually solves the problem and doesn't just kick it down the road and doesn't create enormous risks either for ourselves or for the, the men and women who serve our city as police officers. We had put together a proposal that did that, and the proposal that is before us at this point doesn't accomplish those goals that I believe that we share, and is my hope that we will get to a point where we have a stable pension and that the investments are being made to, to, to further that, and I will be very happy to engage in that conversation with Representative Rodriguez. I am disappointed that we were not able to have that conversation before the bill went forward in the first place, since we have a lot more details about what's been going on and the risks, and have been taking this responsibility seriously for many years, and it's set in motion a process to, to address the challenges. I wanted to ask you about a different set of bills or different set of issues related to the lobbying question, which appreciate Mr. Casar's. to the lobbying question, which I appreciate Mr. Cassar's words on that. This doesn't just apply to the city, though, within Austin. Can you tell us which other entities within Austin would be unable to lobby?
Yeah, on the House version of the bill, it is school districts, counties, cities, community colleges, our transit authority, water districts, public health, any political subdivision would be exempted. Interestingly enough, though, with the school district story, it'd be school districts that would be, couldn't lobby, but charter schools still could because they're not named a political subdivision. So that's some of the nuances there. And for instance, water districts could no longer lobby, but private water companies could. So, yeah.
So basically, entities that are not able to make donations to legislators would be unable to lobby, but all of the organizations, all of the businesses, all of the organizations that are in a position to provide campaign donations would be able to lobby. But those of us who are elected and represent and store taxpayer dollars would not be able to lobby?
Yes, that's correct.
Hopefully that will not succeed. That is, I'm not sure how you even swallow the logic of that. The reason I'm asking, though, is we have a serious situation of a funding problem with our schools here in Austin and in many places across the state. The school finance system is still broken. We were able to make some really significant changes last session, which hopefully will be, continue to be adopted, but there are still serious problems. And then to boot, our educators have, and our schools and our students have been facing the pandemic without aid from the state, without taking the federal aid. I'm about to go in a half an hour up to the Capitol so that my daughter can speak on the Capitol steps to encourage the governor and the lieutenant governor to stop the swap, as we like to say. So if my colleagues are not aware, Austin, according to the formulas from the last two CARES Act and ARP is supposed, just Austin ISD alone, not all of the other districts, is supposed to be getting about $240 million by the formulas. And at this point, there's no clear plans for that money to come down to Austin or to any district to help students across the state. And we, our students and our schools need that money. We need our schools to be able to reopen for our economic recovery, and we need the governor and lieutenant governor and any legislators who will have a say on this to be on board with getting that money out as intended by the federal government. I intend to bring a resolution in support of that effort in the next couple of weeks. But I just want to underscore that I see that very much as part of our legislative agenda because it has enormous impact on our community and our ability for this economic recovery and to invest in the children in our community.
Well, and as you know, because you've been leading on these issues, it's not only vital that the schools get the support and the funding they need because that benefits all of us, but that when they don't, they come to us to help fill that gap. And so the state believing that not funding it means that the need no longer exists doesn't fall down to the local level. At the local level, the community and the school district still sees the needs as existing and come to us to ask for help to fill those gaps, which you all have always answered the call on. So.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Councilmember Alter, thank you for the, thank you for those points that you raised. And I, and thank you in advance for the resolution that you're bringing forward. This, too, is an area where I believe we have passed resolutions asking the city to take strong stances on school funding at the legislature. So this is an area like on permitless carry where I hope that our staff feels emboldened and empowered based on past resolutions to go forward and weigh in as appropriate. In fact, one year, I believe we were even in a, had filed an amicus brief and a lawsuit. So I think that I'm fairly certain that we've passed resolutions asking for it to be added to our legislative agenda, too.
Yes, there is language in there, absolutely.
And I didn't want to, I just, to clarify, I wasn't suggesting that we didn't have that as part of our legislative, but there's a lot of really important specifics with this that I think we should be signing on. And I want to join with other school districts and other folks in raising the voice in support of our schools.
Yeah, that all sounds great to me. I just want, I want to make sure that our staff are also, as they see, appropriate weighing in in the meantime.
We do. In terms of assisting particularly our members, cities often don't go up to testify on education-related items too often because we let our school districts take that lead. But we work closely with them and our delegations to provide information and support and anything that we can do to cross collaborate on those efforts as we work through the session as well. But we can also go further in terms of letters, in terms of other ways of vocalized support, definitely having council members go up like Councilmember Alter does and the work that she does to generate knowledge and awareness on the issue is also helpful.
Bree, thanks for the work that you're doing up there. I think we should kind of let you get back there. I would just say, at a really high level, the legislative, I think, almost attack on cities is real disturbing and really not in the state's best interest. And it's a shame these kinds of issues become politicized. You know, Austin's only 4% of the population in Texas, but we were able to bring a third of the patents and half the venture capital. The state enjoys a diversified portfolio of cities, and they're all different. When Austin's able to draw large companies like Tesla or Apple or others, the Futures, Army Future Command, those things happen in part because Austin is unique. And if they don't come to Austin, it's not like they go to Houston or to Dallas. They go somewhere out of state. Houston, Dallas, San Antonio, Fort Worth, Corpus Christi, El Paso, all incredibly wonderful cities, but all very different. And in that difference, there is a real strength that comes to our state. And trying to force those differences to disappear or to hamstring cities like Austin and our economic vitality is something that just really ultimately disturbs, I mean, hurts the, hurts the state. I joined my colleagues with respect to the de-annexation bills, and I don't understand either the thought process of people that live in a community wanting to be in a position where they don't contribute their fair share. These homes are families that drive on Austin's roads. They, children take advantage of our libraries. It's the community's libraries, it's the community's roads, it's the, it's the community economy that they and their businesses benefit from when they travel. And people ask them where they're from, they say they're from Austin, and they say that with a real sense of pride. Those things happen only because neighbors and communities join together and help support the activities that help make that community strong. I know that some of those folks may not get all of the water utility or the electric utility, but the people that get those utilities pay for those utilities on their water, on their, on their bills. And the people that don't get those utilities don't. But the overwhelming benefit of living in a community like Austin goes beyond those things. It's the other things that they're certainly taking advantage of. And I don't understand why they would resist paying their fair share. And the attacks on cities and on local control, trying to remove from communities the freedom and liberty interests associated with being able to make decisions is disturbing. And the most recent example is the one that was being called up today with respect to sound ordinances, an issue that has divided this community in multiple sections for a decade on this issue. Community people all sit down and work over the course of a year and a half, two years to fashion a compromise and a solution that works for us, only to have the state then step in when there's a disgruntled few who want to try to change their community will and can go to the legislature and find an out-of-area legislator to champion that cause. It's not right. And it ultimately provides a great disservice to the state and our state's economy and our state's exceptionalism. So thank you for going up there. Thank you for joining with the other cities that I think are helping to try to preserve the economic engines and incubators of innovation that cities are.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Councilmember Renteria, did you have something to close us?
Yeah, I just want to close it out. You know, as you could hear my frustration when, you know, that these, it happens every two years, they come here and attack us. And we're one of the best managed cities, the most popular cities. I mean, we, as you said, Mayor, we have corporations that want to move down here. We don't even have to pay them, you know? They want to be here in Austin. And we have legislators that don't even have anything to do with the City of Austin coming down here and telling us that we're not managing our city right. Pass all these legislations to hurt us. And their frustration is that, you know, we end up taking the beating and coming out even stronger. And this happens every two years, and it's time for them to stop. I mean, how can we grow this state, you know? And just because they want political power, they don't care what they're doing to our city. We're the bloodline of the whole state of Texas. Our cities are the ones that are producing all the revenue, creating all the jobs. And in these rural cities, I mean, we could work together, we could, we can provide and support their rural hospitals, you know, instead of hurting each other. And, you know, fighting in this course doesn't get us anywhere. It only makes us slow down to the point where, and then we can tell our citizens of frustration, they say, why can't you do that? How come you can't build affordable housing? How come you can't? And we say, well, we would love to. We have the resources, but we're not allowed to do it. And that's the frustration I have, that I'm seeing so many people out there homeless, suffering. And we continue to fight these little, you know, social battles of fraud, photo fraud. We constantly, over and over again, and it just wears people down, you know? It just gets them so frustrated like mine, like me. I was, I'm just frustrated to see that, that I hear, I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and get to work to find solutions to our problems, you know, to the homelessness, the healthcare. And we're constantly just spending time fighting each other. So that's my frustration. But, you know, I really want to thank you, Bree, for the work you're doing in this town. You know, we just need to make sure that the public knows what they're up to here in Austin so that, you know, we can say, hey, you know, we're going to need your help here. We need you to call the legislators. We need you to just lobby because they're restricting us in a lot. And if it ever comes down to that point where we can't even lobby the legislators, then it's going to be up to the citizens.
Thank you, Councilmember. And to your point in that raised by others, it keeps us from working on solutions for problems. If you go through my PowerPoint, not many solutions in there. And that's frustrating. And then it's frustrating that we can't, through bandwidth and through other means, collaborate more on other issues that this community cares about, like better education, gun reform, other housing solutions, things like that. So I hear you all, and thank you all for your support and help and the city manager. And there's a big team beyond my office that contributes to this, who, you know, answer our emails in a minute when we ask and phone calls and go up to the Capitol and take hard questions on behalf of the city. So this is a citywide team effort, and I've got, you know, thank God, we have some great people that work here at the city to help with that effort, and I want to thank them all, too. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Bree, Mayor, for your time. You had something?
I did, and I'll keep it brief, too. I also just wanted to echo the thanks for Bree and her team, I think, in a lot of ways for folks like me who are new to municipal and state-level politics, really just diving in headfirst. It's a lot like Councilmember Renteria said, in that it wears you down, right? People who aren't born and bred to do this job, it'll wear you down to a nub. And I think it really ultimately affects our ability to do that capacity building, to build that pipeline of regular people being able to represent their municipality. That's what democracy looks like, you know? The fact that only a couple of us on this dais had political experience prior to taking on the big job of representing our communities and our city. And so I find myself with the question, and I think some folks who aren't as familiar as the policy wonks who've been watching, you know, Austin and the state of Texas fight each other for two decades. I don't really have a whole lot in the way of a frame of reference, but I just wondered two things that I'd like to be able to convey to the general public. Number one, do you ever foresee a time where we won't be looking at something that frankly strikes me as so bizarre, that there's a bill that exclusively affects one city? The capital city of this great state of Texas is affected by bills that are exclusively directed at us. I find it odd and bizarre, and I'd like for you to maybe just tell the general public whether or not that's normal. And then the other question I have, and you may or may not be able to answer it, but, you know, in talking to your colleagues in a similar position as yours, is there any other city in a state in our great republic that has to fight their state in order to protect and represent their constituents?
As for bills targeted just at the City of Austin, like these de-annexation bills and the noise ordinance, which to me is even kind of further going into the stratosphere of the state, getting into local issues. No, it's not, it's, do I see that changing only at the politics change? And that means that the voters have to tell representatives, this is what I want you to do, and this is what I send you down in there to do and what I don't need you to go down there and do. I need you to focus on issues like education, like the winter storm, security for electricity never happening, that situation not happening again, food security, you know, Medicaid, things like that. As long as they don't communicate that through their votes, through elections, I think we'll continue to see this. Because people in this community, there's a group, there's definitely a group of people, as you say, who have, who have been part of this process and have connections and live here year-round, and they're able to take advantage of that to the city's detriment. And then, but it affects everyone. It affects everyone in the city. And it leaves, you know, it leaves out large portions of the city out of that process. And that's where it even becomes more inequitable about. And then to your point, and I understand that the process is unknown to a lot of people, it's, I learn something new every session that I didn't know before. I don't know every, you know, you guys can call me questions, and sometimes I know the answer, and sometimes I have to go do a couple of hunting and looking, and the rules change, and the rules, you know, every session can be different. And so you do need, we do need experts and people involved to help navigate this process. I need help navigating the process. I don't have all the expertise, even with my 20 years of doing this, to just navigate it entirely on our own, I grow. So to not be able to have the voice, though, at least that bill does apply to everybody. It isn't just targeted at Austin. But like you said, it's just the bills that do target Austin. But like you said, it's just the bills that do target Austin, they, they are unique. But what other cities need to be cautious about is once they come after Austin, there are cities next. Because the door's been opened once those bills pass. So that, that's how, you know, this gets started.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Bree. Colleagues, the next item that we have in the half an hour.